Okay, we'll call to order this evening's regular meeting of the City Council. Roll call.
Mayor Brinkman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stallman?
Here.
Councilmember Beckman?
Sure.
Councilmember Cernanick?
Present.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Councilmember Valdez?
Here.
You please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, seeing none, we approve the agenda. Any amendments to the minutes from the study session of October 9th? Jim?
You need to show that I was absent on October 9th.
Okay. And I had, on page seven, under norm, it was line 212 and 213. I think there's some words missing. Okay, I'll look at it. Anybody else? Okay. The October 16th minutes. Okay, seeing nothing, those are approved. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. I want to let everyone know on November 27th, we have an early start date proposed for the study session. We've got guests coming and the folks who are going to make the presentation on the citizen survey are coming from Boulder, and so we've got them from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., so if you guys could please make note of that, and we will notice it accordingly. For those of you who have been asking or following our discussions with West Metro relative to Trailmark, we're getting very close to having at least a verbal agreement with them, and as a reminder, what this would do is have West Metro be the responding agency for Trailmark, for Lockmore, which is a subdivision in Lakewood, in an area that's been a concern for Lakewood and their city council member who represents that area. An additional component would be responding to some section of Wadsworth that we are also not as close to and able to respond to the level of service that we'd like to. And then probably most importantly, separate from the fire response, but internally, is we would have access and partnership with our fire partners and hopefully Inglewood, access to the West Metro fires training facility. And that would allow us to dispose of our existing training facility, which I know all of you are cognizant is not in the best state of repair, and would allow us to take some action on that. So, right now, I've got that on the first meeting in January for an action, because we're not at a place where we have an IGA for me to hand off to Kirsten for review and the legal side of it, but hopefully that IGA component would go relatively quickly. They have stated again verbally that if it looks like it's a go, that they would assist us in response immediately and not get hung up on the moving through the response or the procedural approvals of it. Whether that's appropriate or necessary, we can discuss later, but I wanted to let you guys know that that is moving forward. The partners have agreed. We're waiting to hear back from West Metro. And I should say that one of the outstanding issues is really with the fire district and us on the pro rata share between the response value of Lakewood and Lockmore, Lockmore and the Wadsworth component, which is in the district, and what we should pay versus what the district's portion of that would pay. So, we're just working through some of those details. The chief is comfortable that we'll reach agreement on that, and there's a little bit of work still on the Inglewood value for their use of the training facility as well. But, good news, and I had hoped that we could bring it to you before the end of the year, but there's still a chance, but let's aim for the first meeting in January. And second, we've been talking about projects that are going to be coming through the system, and I wanted to let you know that, I think I had said six months to 18 months. So, let me preface this first by don't be talking about these projects, because one or all of them will be coming to you for approval. I don't know what all the process will be at this point, but I wanted to let you know that we have, Breckenridge Brewery is looking at a site in, off of Santa Fe, at the old Wal-Mart location, the A Bear property. Nevada Place, you guys may or may not be aware that that one is in. We expect Breckenridge Brewery to put their application in by the end of the week. Nevada Place is in process. The Sheriff's property across the railroad tracks, we expect that to be coming in before too soon, and the Erickson property, or more commonly known as the Flying B on a residential property down there as well. So, again, not for discussion outside of this forum, but just to let you guys know there, we're open for business and things are happening. I think that's it. Thank you, mayor.
Could you repeat what you said, the very first thing about, is it next week?
I'll have to replay the tape there. No, I'm sorry, for...
Is it for the study session? Next week, you were...
27th.
November 27th, yes.
Oh, 27th, okay.
And it'll be on, yeah, it'll be on your tentative calendar, but 5:00 p.m. on the 27th.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Thanks.
Okay, city attorney?
I have nothing.
Peggy.
Oh.
Sorry, I've switched it up.
That's all right. So, I know we're eager to have a short meeting, but I want to give kudos to fire rescue folks. On Friday afternoon, they pretty much saved somebody's life after the simplest but less pleasant thing of a colonoscopy. This man was celebrating a good colonoscopy, went to one of our, one of his favorite restaurants, which is in Littleton, but he doesn't live in Littleton, and proceeded to pass out totally, panicked everybody, and apparently had a reaction to the anesthesia and was totally dehydrated. They had to take him to Swedish, but, and he pretty much lost pulse, so really super work. It was squirt Team 12 and medic 11, so I wanted to say that. And since maybe somebody is at home watching us and not following the election results, really important to get a colonoscopy, but really be careful that you don't try to do too much before you're rehydrated, so...
Another good Councilman Cole feel-good story. Had a good ending to it, though.
Yeah, very good. And these people were so laudatory of our folks.
Jim?
Only thing I'm going to report on tonight is Dr. Cog. Administrative Committee did approve several contracts, and I worked on the funding procedures for the Area Agency on Aging for 2013, and then changed how our budget process is going to be coming to the Administrative Committee, because that's one of our responsibilities. The Board of Directors then adopted the budget for 2013, and we had a report from the Enterprise Community Partners about suburban TOD projects, and they're looking for funding to do that. Denver has contributed, I think, 15 million toward the fund, but it can only be applied within the city and county of Denver. And so, the suburbs that have possible land banking needs need to come up with funds for doing that. We had our first transportation planning process lesson, I'll call it that. We've got three lessons coming up that's going to look at how we fund transit and transportation and our TD dollars in 2013. It seems like that we've got a set of rules, but when it gets push comes to shove, the board has tendencies to change what the rules are in the middle of the street, and that upsets some of us, that you're not following the established rules. So, we're going to try to look at this in a very lengthy work session in February and establish what the rules for 2013 is going to be. And then that may become an annual process after that to do. Sequestration, the federal government's talking, still talking about doing that. It can be anywhere from 8.6% to 18.7%. It will have a major impact on the AAA, the Area Agency on Aging. It will cut thousands and thousands of meals out of our funding and thousands of miles of transportation, as well as home care, and there's a whole litany of stuff that'll be cut. It also will affect our ability to fund transportation projects in the whole metro area. So, if that, if Congress does not take action after the elections, then those, we'll have one of the other of those cuts come forth. And that's all I've got.
Bruce?
Just a reminder that the, since we're talking about fire, the joint Littleton-Inglewood ESC study session, the first one is going to be held for the public on Wednesday, this, actually tomorrow, at 7:00 p.m. here, and then I believe the next one is Thursday, the 8th, at Inglewood City Council or Council Chambers as well. So, if you've an interest in hearing about the discussion concerning the operational interfacing, if you will, between Littleton Fire Rescue and some level of interaction with the Inglewood system up to and including possibly a system merger, then that would be a forum you might be interested in attending. That's all I have.
Will they get to speak, too?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes, the North Littleton Promise Organization, which is a nonprofit located in District 2, which is northeast part of our city, it helps out a lot of little kids in our area after school and other stuff. They are having their fundraiser this week, but I encourage people to go to www.northlittletonpromise.org. Check out the organization. It's a great organization, and I encourage everybody to go there. It really helps out District 2. That's all I have. Thank you.
And if District 2 gets help, the whole city is helped.
It helps out everybody.
Phil?
Yes, very quickly, just wanted to mention Peggy and Councilmember Beckman were involved, as well as the city manager and city clerk. Yesterday, the Boards and Commissions Task Force had a session, and the reason why I wanted to mention it, we're dealing with the application, the interview, the advertising process. Because the application will need to be done very soon, we wanted to get the application draft out to you for comments, so look for that from the city clerk.
Tomorrow before noon.
Tomorrow before noon, so pay attention on that front. And then, secondly, thank you all for your responses to attend the economic forecast breakfast in December, so, other than that.
Bruce?
Hudson Gardens is developing a 10-year projection master plan. They're looking out in the future and trying to decide the best use of, and the best way that they can offer services. Hudson Gardens is 30 acres and is fast becoming one of the premier garden spots truly in Colorado and getting national recognition. Recently, they waived their admission charges, so if Hudson Gardens is someplace that you like to go, you might want to go there more often, because there will be no payment in order to get access to the park, meaning you can go in as often as you'd like and spend whatever time you'd like to do. I'll report back on the results of that master plan, but I am one of the stakeholders who's helping to give them the input that they need to develop it.
Thank you. Okay, citizen appearances, this is, we have no guest citizens scheduled, but this is an opportunity for anybody who wants to come down and address council on any issue related to the city services or policies or any other matter of community concern. You may come down and speak this evening. You have a limit of four minutes, and any of the scheduled agenda items that include a public hearing, we ask that you hold your comments until that public hearing. Would anybody like to come down and talk to us? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances and resolutions must be read by title. Prior to a vote on the motion, any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. Item A is resolution approving Highline Business Improvement District 2013 Budget and Operating Plan. Kirsten?
I think you were just going to have me read ordinances, so is that...
Okay, then we, yeah, then we need to change the, "All ordinance and resolution must be read by title" on here. So, item B, approval of scope of service for presiding municipal judge. I need a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve consent agenda items 7A and 7B. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Everybody vote. Motion is seven in favor. The motion carries. Sorry. Okay. Item 8A is an ordinance, second reading, approving the 2013 sanitary sewer utility charge. Kirsten?
This is an ordinance of the City of Littleton, Colorado, and many provisions of the City Code regarding wastewater fees.
Okay, Doug?
Thank you. This item is on second reading tonight. We did have a public hearing and a first reading a couple of weeks ago. And on October 9th, the council did perform a study session. They reviewed the 2013 sewer rates and a five-year projection regarding the sewer fund balances to make sure we had adequate balances moving forward for that fund. Based on these, the revenue and expenditure assumptions and the data from that study, they were also determined that there was some unanticipated capital needs in the near future for the sewer utility fund. The council did review various proposals brought by staff, and this proposal, raising the rates overall by a two-and-a-half percent increase for all annual sewer customers next year, was chosen as the best option moving forward, and that's what's before council tonight for consideration. This increase equates to less than $6 a year for single families and less than $5 a year for multifamily residences. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Bruce?
A quick one. This may be directed at Council, or council, City Works Director, Public Works Director Bloston, sorry. Yeah, that guy. Charlie, just to refresh my memory, you guys reviewed all this with the districts and everybody was happy, they were on board with this?
They were converted, talked to, and yes, they had no problems.
Okay. And then the other question is, this comes up every so often, but I know we've looked at it or talked about it in the past, but the whole concept of metered billing for wastewater, in 100 words or less, we generally don't think that's viable, because it's going to cost a lot of money to implement, and there's no practical way to collect the data at this point without spending a lot of money. Is that an accurate statement?
I could say yes, but I'll go into a little bit more in that most of the properties that we serve are provided water by Denver, and for us to get the information from them and convert it for our use for all the properties within the eight districts and the city would be very cumbersome. Let me add one other point, that if you did use that kind of system, we would also have to establish a minimum, even though maybe nobody used the sewer for that whole year, they were gone, we still would have to have a minimum. Some cities charge up to 91% of the average rate for the minimum. So, I'm not sure we would accomplish a whole lot by doing that, and yes, Councilman, it would involve an extensive amount of work in order to make that happen, which would be costly and charged to the sewer fund.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
And I would give one other reason why we might not want to look at that. Not all of our citizens in Littleton pay their bills to Littleton, because some of it goes directly to Inglewood. And so, then you're creating two classes of citizens, one class who is operating under one system and another class is operating on a different system, and they could be next-door neighbors.
No, I understand. Yeah.
Bruce?
Just a comment, this is a five-page ordinance, and on page three, it has the most complicated formula I've ever seen. And there's no explanation of how that formula works in the council communication. Charlie, if you're going to give us those, you probably ought to at least spend a paragraph... I've got a 30-minute speech on how that formula works, but I'll pass it. It is a calculation on the strength of sewage that industrial users are allowed to discharge, but it has to be pretreated to the level of typical residential. And that's the Cliff Note version of what that formula says. It's interesting that Inglewood has the exact same formula. This is one of those trust factors, because none of us can try to... I couldn't do it either, Councilman. But, when you, we have some, what's called significant industrial users, and if they're allowed just a straight discharge, the strength of their sewage or quality of it needs to be brought back down to a level that is typical of residential, and that is what that formula works on. Yes.
And it impacts others than pure industrial users, because it may be something like chlorine out of a pool.
It could be a restaurant.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to come down and address council on this issue, please do so now. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that the proposed ordinance approving the 2013 sanitary sewer utility charges be approved on second reading. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Phil?
Just wanted to reiterate that we did take a look at the trajectory that this level of increase would have towards meeting known, or fairly known, future costs that were outside of the projection period that was included. And with this, we end up leaving the projection period with a lower rate actually being charged, as well as a sufficient reserve buildup to cover those known charges. And so, I urge folks to vote in favor of this.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2013 sanitary sewer charge. The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries. Okay, item 9A, council, this is, many of you have seen this before, this is a draft purpose of statement from the South Platte Working Group. The group has determined that they, as we did with the first working group, to cohesively put together a statement of purpose. This not only is intentions, our work, but it also helps to serve as a good guidepost, particularly when we're looking at getting additional grant money from GOCO, that type of thing. So, the gist of it has changed slightly from before. We are not doing as much acquisition, we're doing a lot more work regarding the enhancements to the river, which we've added that include economic benefits and including the traditional recreational and natural environment. So, what we need tonight is for council to approve this, so that at the next meeting, I can sign it, as all the other members, which you can see the members of the working group, will all sign it, and then we move forward. So, are there any questions?
Just one comment on it, Debbie, is in looking at it, I'm very encouraged by the vision component that also includes the word "economic opportunities." As we did in our open space task force, we wanted to look at access and complementary development along the river corridor. So, as much as many of us will value the environmental side of it, it's also, it balances with an economic side.
Thanks, Phil. And to tag onto that, that was a huge component this year from the three cities primarily, which are Inglewood, Littleton, and Sheridan, that have an economic play along the river. Columbine is a huge supporter, but their economic, you know, they don't have a lot of retail or business. But, that was a huge component, and that also combines with the recreational, where the recreational will also serve as, as an economic development factor, so this will be a fun project. Peggy, did you have...
Yeah, on the, and this is, I think is generally very good, but on the goals, the one, two, three, the fourth goal, the last goal, to connect communities to the river through more consistent land use, economic development, and coordinated policies. Now, consistent land use, in theory, heaven help me, could be all junkyards. I mean, that's consistent. I'm wondering, do we really need the phrase "consistent land use" so much as the focus on the coordinated policies that are tying into the three previous bullets?
Interesting, because that is, was actually put in there because of the crusher lot and some of those things, where we're looking at them being the non-consistent, and how do we reverse that?
Yeah, but consistent, again, doesn't really capture that, I think, so maybe, just give that feedback.
Okay.
I think if there's a way to capture the other piece of it without the consistent piece, it's the coordinated, and what I had thought possibly, not that this is necessarily good, but if we're promoting a healthy, vibrant river corridor through coordinated and economic development through, you know, the coordinated policies, but anyway.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
See, I'd never thought of that until Peggy brought it up.
Yeah.
In that manner. I thought of it like the working group is disgusted, but I think this is one of those things, Debbie, that if you bring it up in that context at your meeting, that it can be wordsmith for that minor type of thing to, if the group agrees and not have to come back to all the voting entities to change it.
Okay, will do.
And this came to my mind in part because I helped with the leaf recycling, you know, in the big area along the river corridor on Sunday, and heaven help me, all the junk cars and everything around, and I thought, well, we could be pretty consistent, but that's not the consistency we want, so, thank you.
Any other comments?
I'd like to move that we approve the South Platte Working Group statement of purpose.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the statement of purpose for South Platte Working Group. Vote. The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries. 11A is an ordinance on first reading. Kirsten?
This is an ordinance of the City of Littleton, Colorado, amending ordinance number 21 series of 2011, known as the Annual Appropriation Bill for All Municipal Purposes of the City of Littleton, Counties of Rappahoe, Jefferson, and Douglas, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2012, and ending December 31, 2012.
Doug?
Each year, at the end of the year, toward the end of the fiscal year, staff brings together a list of legal appropriation adjustments that we'd like council to consider so the city can maintain their legal status as far as the budget appropriations for the year. This year, for 2012, the city adopted 15 different funds, and we have reviewed all those funds and appropriations, and we brought forward four separate funds that we would like to ask council to consider increasing appropriations to maintain the expenditure activity that is anticipated to happen through the year 2012. The first item is a general fund transfer of $1.6 million to the, from the general fund to the city's capital projects fund. This was discussed during the 2013 budget discussions, and it was proposed for a 2013 transfer, and council gave staff direction to actually move that forward and go ahead and put it on as a amendment to the 2012 budget. And there were also some other 2013 budget eliminations, reductions, and that brought the total to around $1.6 million. That's our best estimate right now, but we are asking council to approve that transfer to the capital projects fund. Another large appropriation is for the consolidated special revenue fund, and that's comprised of the wildland fires. The city has a wildland fire team that's deployed every year. It's unanticipated what the fire activity will be. We fought fires in-state and out-of-state this year, and there was a lot of activity, unfortunately, and that total is brought to $442,500. The city is fully reimbursed by the state of Colorado for those costs. Mostly every year, we have some unanticipated grants, and that year, this year, it's totaled $757,660 for 10 grants that the city has actually been approved for this year from various activities. The large one is Rappahoe County Open Space Grants of $505,800. There's also the fourth fund that we'd like council to consider increasing appropriations for the shopping cart of $6,000. That fund's budget was only $56,000 in 2012, so the $6,000 is quite a large cost in proportion to the total budget, but based on vehicle and extra personnel costs for running that service, it's projected to need another $6,000 in appropriations. And just one other item to note, the second reading for this item tonight would be December 4th, so not two weeks from tonight, but four weeks.
Thank you. Any questions? Bruce?
I had, I just need a quick clarification, and I just saw, I asked City Manager Penny a question this afternoon concerning the ordinance, in fact, in section one, so just make sure I understand. Section one says, of the ordinance, says that the general fund expenditure, so we're basically saying that we're taking, this is where the expenditure is coming from?
Correct.
So it's essentially, we're authorizing a million six, taking a million six from the general fund, which I understand.
Yep.
But it doesn't say where it's going to, but we're saying it's going to go to the capital projects fund.
Or an offshore account, whichever is closer.
Yeah, sure. But presumably, the former.
Yes, because what we need council's action on is the appropriation of the expenditure.
And that makes sense, but then I guess I don't quite understand the consolidated special revenue fund, because we've already expended those monies, so you're saying we're just appropriating the fact that we've.
That we've over-expended within that. We've spent more than the council.
But we've gotten the reimbursement, so technically we haven't.
But from a cash flow basis, that's accurate, but from a legal appropriation of the funding that council has authorized prior to the end of the year, we need you to appropriate the full legal amount that we've expended.
Okay, and then the same thing with the grants, we've actually expended these funds. We've got money that is, that has, or will come in for them, but we just need to.
Correct.
Bless the fact that we approved the expenditure.
That we're expending the funds, yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Phil?
And Doug, I'll try and put three questions in one, so that you have my understanding on this, just to make sure I'm okay. The $1.6 million is a highly confident level of surplus that will exist that we're moving into capital projects. Part B is the consolidated special revenue fund is revenue that the city has received, just getting it into the right place. And then with regard to the shopping cart for 2013, the shopping cart is being consolidated, and that activity and enterprise is being consolidated into the general fund. You can respond, yes?
Yes, all three of those. It's a quick answer, yes.
Other questions? Jerry?
Yeah. Why now? Why are we doing this right now? I mean, does it have to be before the end of the year that we do this?
Yes, it does have to be by the end of the year, and we're nearing the end of the year, so council will be meeting every Tuesday, so, yes. We wait until basically the last possible moment, because we try to anticipate the needs and what the expenditures are going to be. So now, between November, December, there might be some other discrepancies, so we try to leave ourselves a little bit of conservative wiggle room there. So we try to be conservative, but yes, we have to do it by the end of the year, by legal standards.
Our first one, right? Yeah, okay. So this is coming back in a couple weeks?
December 4th.
It's going to be four weeks.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right.
Yeah.
Cool, all right, thank you.
Any other question? Peggy?
Yeah, so in the background, the general fund, the $1.6 million, so the paragraph says, "If the actual amount's more than $1.6, it's anticipated that an ordinance and resolution will be considered transferring the difference, et cetera." What happens, just for the record, if it's less?
Well, and we tried, what we tried to do is, we tried to actually adopt some type of language where we could transfer the actual amount, which we won't know until May, when the audit is completed, but we wanted to be able to make the actual transfer. Well, legally, we couldn't come up with the right language to do that, so if it turns out there is extra surplus higher than the $1.6 million, which there very well could be, then we could come back to the council in 2013. We're anticipating, if we do that, we'll ask the council to consider a budget amendment for 2013 to make a transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund.
What's, if it's less? My question was, what if it's less?
Then we won't come back to the council with consideration.
So we'd still?
If it's substantially less, I guess that's something we'd have to consider, but we're anticipating it to be at least $1.6 million or possibly higher. That's our anticipation.
This is a very conservative estimate, so you're not figuring it will be less?
Well, like I said before, we still have November and December, plus we have a lot of audit adjustments.
Yeah, but I mean, I just.
So please don't hold me to the $1.6.
So I just was curious on the process, if it is less. What if it were $1.2, for example?
Then we'll transfer $1.2.
And we have to have some kind of action?
No, because you'll be appropriating up to $1.6.
Oh, up to.
And so if it's less than.
That's the right answer, I'm sorry, Peggy.
We're not going to transfer funds that aren't there.
Okay, so... But the proposed ordinance say up to?
No, but realistically, that's what we would do. We're not, we go through this every year on the transfers, and we are estimating, as Doug stated, that what our estimates for the year-end will be, and so the concern is if, is it's a higher number, not if it's a lower number.
Okay.
That's true.
Okay, because we're close enough at the end of the year, you're pretty confident.
Yes, and like I said, we really won't know the number until May, because we have to do some audit adjustments, and the auditors will be in here early next year as well.
Okay, Jerry?
A couple of questions. So what is the SIPA and also the Harvard?
Yeah, and I apologize, that's an acronym there. It's Statewide Internet Portal Authority, and that was actually a technology grant that we got. We're going to advertise some classes online through a vendor, and once that system is online, then citizens can go ahead and register for different classes like sales tax, educational classes, library museums, some specific classes that they're going to offer. That will be all online and offered to the citizens.
Where do I go to for definition on each one of these, then, including Harvard?
I can add more information to the second reading background if you'd like. I don't have all the specific information on the Harvard grant. I know that was for the Economic Development Division, and I'm not sure the parameters as to how we have to spend that $10,000.
Doug, wasn't that the award that was done in conjunction with the study where they came out and evaluated, and I think Doug and Chris actually went back east and made a presentation?
That's exactly what it was.
Well, if you would include a little blurb, that would be helpful next time.
Okay, that certainly will.
Any other questions? Phil?
No question, I was going to make the motion.
Well, this is a public hearing, so if anybody would like to come down and address counsel on this issue, please do so now. Seeing no one, oh, Jose? Come on down. Please state your name and address.
Joseph Trahill, 5574 South Huron, Littleton, Colorado. Are we allowed at this time to make comments on some of these funds that were, are being looked at, the grants from the city?
Sure.
Such as the historic preservation?
Okay.
Okay, my personal feeling on the historic preservation is, it looks to me like last year, the last few years, we've reduced that amount to, from $50,000 to $26,000. Now, is that a correct figure that you'll be looking at this year?
This year, we put it in the budget, oh, sorry.
These are, just for clarification, Jose, these are grants that the city has received.
As received.
Yeah, this is not part of the city's grant program for the historic district.
Okay.
These are revenues that have come into the city that we applied for, which is why Councilman Valdez was asking for definitions of what these are. These are revenues, not expenditures.
Okay, well, that's what I was, wanted some clarification on that.
Very well.
I can understand that.
So if the funds aren't allocated, it goes back to wherever, then?
Well, we've already spent it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and you're going to continue to see, I mean, our goal is to continue to apply for grants and expand this, so our hope is that that will be a substantive.
So it's just a pass-through almost, then to pay us back?
Correct, yes. But it still requires a council appropriation.
Thank you. Thanks, Jose.
Would anybody else like to address counsel? Okay, seeing no one, I close the public hearing, and I need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that the proposed ordinance amending the 2012 annual appropriation be approved on first reading.
Second.
Okay, Bruce?
That Bruce.
Bruce on the end.
Bruce, that Bruce.
And then it comes back.
It was Bruce.
Yeah, it'll come back.
Any Bruce you choose.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, I need a vote. A vote approves it. Vote is seven in favor, the motion carries. Okay, item 11B is an ordinance on first reading and a public hearing. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City of Littleton, Colorado, amending provisions of the city code regarding stormwater quality.
Charlie?
Again, very briefly, the city has what's called an MS4 permit for storm drainage runoff, and the state of Colorado did an audit of our system for permit requirements, came up with some minor changes that they would like to have done, and that's what this ordinance will do.
Okay, Jim, and then Bruce, and then Bruce.
Charlie, in 713, which has to do with the exclusion for firefighting, it only allows emergency firefighting. What do we do about our fire training center?
It's in Inglewood.
But it puts water into the river.
In the city of Inglewood.
And they have to deal with that? You're smiling.
It's all on the city limits of Inglewood. My, our authority stops at the city limit line. It's the best answer I can give you, Councilman. There's probably, if I could be logical, instead of being a little smart about it, the logical answer is there probably is an exclusion for that property, specific to that use, because of the nature of it, but there's storm water at the fire training center, is treated before it goes into the creek. But I imagine that Inglewood does have some kind of waiver in regard to that requirement. That's what we would do if it was in our city.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Well, yeah, a couple of questions. I mean, does Inglewood have an MS4 permit the same as us?
I would assume so.
But it's ultimately, they have to deal with it?
Yes.
All right. Because it's their fire training center too, in theory?
Yes.
Okay. Second question, more of a, actually, I've got two questions. I think I already know the answer to this because it's a state issue, but from a legal perspective, as far as a city attorney is concerned, does this, this doesn't give pause with respect to our ability as a home rule municipality to approve ordinances as we see fit versus having, in this case, a state agency of some sort, more or less, say, "We have to fix your code because it conflicts with..." I mean, we try to do stuff in accordance with the state in a general sense, but it's unusual, I guess, in my experience, to have the state say, "You have to go fix your code." We usually try to keep our code in alignment, but I don't usually see it go the other way.
Well, we do see that from time to time with, like, the floodplain regulations and things like that, so it's not that uncommon.
Okay, all right. So this one doesn't necessarily cause you any heartburn?
No, this is a mandate.
All right, and the last one I was going to ask was on the ordinance itself, where it talks about authorized by permit issued by so-and-so, or the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. So there's a lot of, some sort of monitoring going on. Who, in fact, does that as far as storm drainage is concerned on our behalf? I assume it's your responsibility?
We do it.
How do you do it?
We have a testing system. We actually go out there quarterly and test the water.
And test it where? At various storm drainage points?
One location is just north of Prince Street in the river, where Slaughterhouse-Gaultsch empties into the river. We go in there and we take samples and have them tested.
Okay.
We've always been within compliance so far.
And then you have to report to somebody?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, I'm fine. Thank you.
Bruce?
Kind of back to that discussion about the fire training center.
Kind of back to that discussion about the fire training center. If, if this, I'm aware that other cities are facing this same audit and this same issue in other jurisdictions in the Denver area, so if Inglewood hasn't been audited yet, they're going to be, and I think the issue is going to still be one for us to deal with as a partner with Inglewood at the Fire Training Center, because that water does go right across the bike trail, right down into the plat, when they're doing training exercises there, because it doesn't have an internal drainage system. So, I want to raise that flag that maybe we should be proactive so that we don't have our firefighters end up being cited for behavior out there that might violate the spirit of this law that Inglewood's going to have to pass. So, just a thought. And the other is, there's an exclusion in here for emergency firefighting, but I'm concerned that a lot of the things that the fire department does with water may or may not be in the definition of emergency firefighting, and, you know, they do a lot of activities in which they create a safer environment, but it's not, a fire isn't involved. So, if someone hasn't looked at that and our fire processes and procedures out there in the field, they probably need to.
I'll bring that to their attention. I'll also check with Inglewood and see what they're doing in order to comply at this fire training center.
Thank you.
Bruce?
And I agree with Councilmember Beckman. One question, though, I mean, to the extent that we do the West Metro Agreement and we get access to their fire training, are we going to cease doing what would more or less be objectionable with the water here, anyway?
Yes.
That's the intent.
At this fire training center, yes.
Okay, and then in theory, again, whatever goes on at Kipling and Hampton, wherever that thing is, is they've got their own issue. I mean, they'll, they'll have it all figured out.
Lakewood or Jefferson County, whichever that's in.
Okay, but I agree with your point, though.
Just to amplify that, I have been on a tour out there. They have their own circulating system, and they have a reclamation and meet whatever those standards are.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come down and address counsel, please do so now. There's no one on the roster, and seeing no one come down, I will close the public hearing, and I need a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve the ordinance amending storm drainage ordinance be approved on first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve storm drainage ordinance. Counsel, ready to vote? The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries. Okay. Yeah. Okay. We have an executive session, so Bruce, do you want to?
Sure. I move that pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute, Section 24-6-6-402 Sub-4 Sub-F, for discussion of personnel issues regarding City Manager Michael Penny, and pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute, Section 24-6-402 Sub-4 Sub-B, to confer with the city attorney for legal advice on pending claim and settlement options, and included in the session would obviously be city council, as well as City Manager Penny and City Attorney Crawford.
Okay. Counsel, we need five votes to go in. Ready to vote? The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries. Who seconded that?
I did.
Thank you. Okay, so we will step into exec. We do have an item under general business, so after exec, we will return for a general business item.
You do have an item?
Do.
Mm-hmm.